Good morning. I'd like to call to order the conference meeting of the Mobile County Commission in preparation for our July 12th meeting. Do we have any speakers this morning?
Good morning, Commissioners. No one has signed up to speak.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioners. Okay, number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 14, 2021 and June 28, 2021. Number two, approve the list of claims. Number three, approve amending February 22nd, 2021 minutes. Agenda item number 10 to read as follows. Approve contract with Bishop State Community College for two contributions, $250,000 for Advanced Manufacturing Center Lecture Hall, and $100,000 for Health Sciences Building Nursing Simulation Suite in exchange for naming rights for such facilities. Number four, approve amending June 28, 2021 minutes. Agenda item number 37 to read as follows. Approve appropriation contract with the city of Bayou La Batry in amount of $5,500 from, uh, to purchase surplus vehicle 2014 Chevy Tahoe, asset number 9334. Number five, approve amending June-
Uh, just one thing. I'm pretty sure that I've signed that contract. So is it gonna be-
Well, it had already been approved and it may have come off because the sale had already been approved.
Yeah. We approved it at the last meeting and there was an issue with the, uh, the way it was worded. So I think the contract's already been-
The contract's okay. It was just the agenda language that had to come-
Language had to be repaired.
Okay.
And the next item as well, I think-
I noticed we got a lot of amendments on here. Did we have issues with wording on all this?
Sometimes we don't see those when they-
Before they happen? They're on the agenda, you mean? Maybe we oughta take a, have time to take a second look before-
We can talk about how, how-
Yeah, that way we don't have to go back and fix things like this.
Well, I think this may have been my issue because I, this is the first time I had, uh, purchased a vehicle from one of the municipalities in my district and so it was new for me. So I think maybe I, the way I turned it in may have caused the issue on those two. So I, I take responsibility for those two, so.
It's all, it's all subject to legal review though.
And number five, is this, uh, approve amending June 28, 2021 minutes. Agenda item number 39 to read as follows. Approve appropriation contract with the city of Bayou La Batry in amount of $2,000 from, to purchase surplus vehicle 2015 for Tars, asset number 9367. Number six, approve amending the 2021 capital improvement plan to create project and add estimated costs as follows. This amendment creates a new project, Saraland Playground Equipment, and allocates $45,000 from Capital Improvement Plan District One unnamed projects. Number seven, approve amending the 2019 capital improvement plan to transfer seven, $17,010.71 of District Two funds from Mobile County Soccer Complex to Sims Senior Center Edition. This amendment increases estimated costs for the Sims Senior Center Edition and decreases estimated costs for Mobile County Soccer Complex by $17,010.71. Number eight, approve contract with Stephen E. Counts for provision of barber services at Strickland Youth Center for a term of one year at a rate of $75 per one and a half hour weekly visit. Excuse me. Number nine, approve lease agreement with Teresa Jackson and Jerome Jackson doing business as JJ's Fresh Seafood for a space in the parking lot at Theodore Oaks Shopping Center for selling seafood from their vehicle. Number 10, approve lease agreement with Tahia Conyers doing business as Jojo's Wings for a space in the parking lot at Eight Mile Shopping Center for selling wings from their food truck. Number 11, authorize advertisement for Biz Project Coffee Shop Government Plaza. Number 12, authorize advertisement for Biz Project Bay Hayes Renovations. And number 13, authorize advertisement for Biz Project Convert Minimum Security Barracks to Minimum Security. Number 14, approve amendment number two with Jill Ross doing business as Interior Concepts for Service Agreement for Professional Interior Design and Related Consulting Services. This amendment will revise the provisions for the services of the contract and for the terms of payment for those services rendered and the contract amount will be unchanged.
Okay. What are we doing here?
I, I think it had to do with the language in her contract. I think some of the services she provided didn't fall into that category, but it doesn't change, uh, the amount. Now, I'm, I'm sending $17,000 over, but that's part, primarily the change order with the architect. And construction. Is that, does anybody wanna?
See, what-
Okay.
So that's the last amendment, um, it, it, uh, changes terms as you said, um, there's a, uh, scope of assignments listed within that agenda item in your book and it eliminates that, um, and changes it to an object.
Lead contract. Um, some of the, uh, services provided, well, the majority of the services provided were for the, uh, design and, um, uh, rehabilitation of the meeting rooms here at the Government Plaza.
Okay, so what, what we went from a contract with specific projects to one with services as assigned by the county commission. So really, the only way that works is that we sit as a commission and decide which projects we want her to work on. Is, is that what we're contemplating? Because that, I mean, otherwise it, it lacks, there's no scope of work in it anymore.
Well, I think- I think the intent for, has been all along, and, and I don't know that it's something that we voted on, but was to redo our meeting rooms. And that was part of what she was tasked to, to go and to work on as far as design and presented design to, uh, facilities.
So is that the last thing? This, this kind, we've, we've, this has been around for a long time, this contract. And it's, I guess I'm trying to figure out what are the projects to get us through and completed. I mean, what, what is our expectation and the timeline around? That's what I'm, that's what, I'm just trying to get just a little bit more detail in here than-
Well, this, this basically is, is, as Tyler said, the two meeting rooms. Uh, now there's other work that was really in, in the initial scope of work in her project. Now, whether we proceed with that, and that was, of course, uh, the 10th floor conference room, we've got the ceremonial courtroom, you know, some of the other parts of the building. But whether we proceed with that is, is entirely up to the commission. But I think all along, the idea was that, uh, the first order of business would be the, the meeting rooms.
Okay. And all I'm saying is rather than a loose scope of work that says provide services as assigned by the county commission, that we figure out what those either have appoints, like a liaison, if it's gonna be you, Tyler, to work with her to, to know what those are as opposed to, you know, just-
I think that's what's happening.
Yes, ma'am. And, um, I think to answer part of your question, there's, um, about $3,000 left in this not to exceed contract. So it's essentially wrapping up anyway. So-
So we're at the end of it?
Well, we're at the end of the, the, the scope of work on the projects that she's currently working on, which is the meeting rooms.
So to amend, uh, the contract, add more money or different services, that would have to go back before the commission again.
So is the 3,000 adequate to finish the meeting room?
It should be. We're doing most of that bidding and project administration in-house and, um, interior concepts part has been oversight and, um, selection of materials and finishes.
Okay. So, all right, okay. So there is something definite that she's working on, okay.
And, and she's working with, uh, with Tyler and Tim and John Seville primarily. I mean, uh, they're overseeing the, her scope of work.
Okay.
That's right. This is, this is one of the items that was in that original scope of work, but it's, um, become more in-depth than was originally anticipated.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Number 15, approve contract with Madison Consulting Group in amount of $4,000 to do an actuarial analysis of the county's old self-insured workers' compensation program. Number 16, approve contract with Madison Consulting Group in amount of $2,000 to do an actuarial analysis of the county's auto and general liability program. Number 17, approve a master service contract with Sand Tech, Stantec Consulting Services, Inc. to provide professional services for Mobile County Park Initiative Project and Task One, Africa Town USA State Park feasibility study, and Task Two, John Lewis Land, uh, landing site assessment and conceptual planning, and Task Three, Juanito Crenshaw Park Site Assessment and Conceptual Planning.
On task two, strike John Lewis. That, it should not be John Lewis. This should be Lewis Landing.
Strike out John?
Yeah.
Okay. Number 18, approve requests of the Alabama Cooperative Extension System 4-H Club to use the John Archer Arena on August 3rd, 2021 for the 4-H Club cast weigh-in.
Question. Um, is, is there any associated cost of this to the county for use of this facility? You know, I'm not opposed to, uh, for them to, you know, waiving, uh, whatever typical rental fees there are, but if there's a cost to the county, I, I think that those always should be covered.
We would generally just maintain the, the darter in the arena. So it's, uh, some staff time that would fall back on the Parks Department to run the tractor through there. So, um, we can pass that cost down to them if you like.
Well, I, I just feel like, you know, if, if we're not charging a rental fee, I mean, that's a, that's a huge break right there. Uh, but, but whatever cost it takes to, if it's extra staff time or, or, it can't be much, you know?
It's not much.
But I do think that, uh, that, that should be, I mean, it, we should be consistent, I guess, is what I'm saying with some of these organizations like that.
Is it after hours? Is it whatever they're doing, is it after hours or?
I'll have to look into the, to the agreement and, and get back to y'all on that. I, I think then, from what I recall, the, the rental fee is $350. So it's a minimum fee, um, and I'll look back on the, the timeframe on that.
And I'm fine with waiving the rental fee. I just, I, I, you know, we, we just need to make sure we know what the, what our cost is and, and make sure there's, that we have that covered, I think.
So we've historically waived this fee from what I'm told? So this is just a continuation of previous practice?
I mean, do you, do you have any idea how much, uh, the cost would be, just offhand?
Well, I'd anticipated one staff person being there. And so that eight or 10 hours plus a, the equipment rate.
If you could just get back with me, I'd like to know what that adds up to.
Will do.
Thank you. At least we know what we would be contributing.
Number 19, approve sponsorship agreement in amount of $500 for the 17th Annual Alabama Coastal Bird Fest 2021 to be paid from the Environmental Services Department budgeted funds. Number 20, approve declaring an end to the health-related state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic and end the payment of the pandemic hazard pay effective upon approval of the personnel board. Number 21, approve amending the guidelines for the Mobile County Commission COVID-19 pandemic to remove language related to the emergency pay sick leave and extended family medical leave and clarify the use of administrative leave as it relates to COVID-19 to be effective upon approval of the personnel board. Number 22, approve application of Dorgan Core LLC for off-premise retail beer and table wine license for Dollar General Store. 23, approve application of PS Taco Company Westmobile LLC for restaurant retail liquor license. Number 24, approve application of Love Travels Stops and Country Stores, Inc. for off-premise retail beer and table wine license. 25, adopt a resolution establishing county alcohol levies on seven new license types for the fiscal year 2021 through 2022 as follows.
Now, I had a rough, when you say that the amounts shown here, um, this was the, the amount shown here are the same as the state fees and they are the maximum amounts of law enforcement that you have to, so. We recommend that you are off the same fees.
In discussion. Okay.
Number 26, approve minor amendment to the program year 2020 action plan to move $50,000 CDBG funds from Sims Senior Center Kitchen Buildout and Walking Trail and $40,000 from Home Emergency Repair Assistance Project to Grand Farms Road West Waterline Relocation, Fence Reset, and Driveway Improvements.
And this was because of the, the costs from, the bid costs were higher than anticipated?
Yeah, I think some of the, uh, writ, some of the costs are deferred back to the residents and, uh, I think they really don't have the money to pay it. So this grant money would help do that, I think. Is that what I understood? Yes, okay.
Now, you, you know you're gonna over.
Oh, uh, it's, it's on, it's, it's coming.
I thought already paid for this in advance.
No, I, I think we're doing, actually, we're doing a substitution here. Where's mayor? We've, we've already had the conversation.
Yeah, I think so. And I think-
But it's immediate, so it'll-
Yeah, I think it'll, um, help get that project out there finished and help the residents out there, uh, tremendously.
They'll be excited.
They really just do not have the money to-
There's, that, that's the case in a lot of different instances throughout the county.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sure it'll cost me. I need 10 more grand for that too, by the way, if anybody else wants to, uh-
Item 27.
Number 27, approve agreement with Tetra Tech for professional administrat, administrative services related to the U.S. Treasury Emergency Rental Assistance II program based on a time and materials basis for an amount not to exceed $1,303,758, uh, effective as of August 1st, 2021 and subject to final legal review. 28, approve sponsorship agreement with African Town Community Development Corporation in amount of $1,000 from District One funds for traveling musical event. 29, approve amending June 28, 2021 minutes. Agenda item number 25 to read as follows. Approve one-year contract renewable annual leave for the purchase of election force and 10x university software and maintenance in support for an amount of $60,350 in initial outs onsite training up to $4,000 for approbate judge. Excuse me. Number 30, approve memorandum of understanding with the city of Mobile and the city of Pritchard fiscal year 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program. Mobile County Minister to administer the grant. 31, approve execution of right-of-entry agreement with the city of Pritchard for data collection and feasibility assessment related to the African Town USA State Park Project. 32, authorize advertisement of requests for proposals for marine debris removal services at Mobile County River Delta Marina and Campground. 33, approve rescinding county commission action in April 26, 2021 minutes. Agenda item number 41, approving appointment of Gloria Tate to serve on the Board of Directors of the Kushe Water District to represent place five, Chanchula District for a four-year term expiring April 25th, 2025. And approve appointment of Jenny Reese to serve in the Gloria Tate's place with the same term and expiration date. Number 34-
So Ms. Tate did not live in the right district.
Okay.
That, that's what it was. She lived in the wrong place. Well, she lived in the right place, but it just wasn't the right place to represent that district after. Okay, it's not that funny, Brian.
Nope.
But she lived in the right place.
Number four, number 34, we need to vote at the conference. Agreement with Think Guard for cyber guard security essentials in amount of $2,003.04 per month for three years for Cisco Advance malware protection and Cisco Umbrella for the county commission.
So, so move.
Second.
And number 35, approve rental agreement with Sunbelt Rentals under the current purchasing cooperative agreement, um, near partners contract in amount of $23,322.64 for one, 150-ton squirrel chiller for the metro jail for the period of Au, August 3rd, 2021 through August 3rd, 2021, October 3rd, 2021. 36, adopt a resolution authorizing request of the sheriff's office to dispose of certain items. 37, approve appropriation contract with Cops for Kids, Inc. in a total amount of $5,000 to be divided among District One funds in amount of $2,000. District Two funds in amount of $1,000 and District Three funds in amount of $2,000 for operational expenses. 38, approve amending 2021 capital improvement plan to create a new project and add estimated costs as follows. This amendment creates project purchase of land for Mobile County Soccer Complex and allocates $2,456,000 from the 2021 capital improvement plan District Two unnamed projects, purchase of land for Mobile County Soccer Complex. Third, approve purchase of a 61.4 acres of real property located at the Mobile County Soccer Complex for the purchase price of $2,456 plus closing costs and to authorize commission present to sign all documentation related to the transaction pending legal review.
And just to give you, uh, some background on what's going on here, uh, this was actually part of about nearly a decade ago. You know, we had this, had original plan, uh, for 200 acres and, and part of the, the property would be used for, for the future home of the, uh, Mobile, uh, aquatic, indoor aquatic complex or, uh, facility. And, uh, there's some property, um, around 17 acres or so of upland property that, uh, that we would, I, I'd like for us to look at, uh, uh, trying to enter into a public-private partnership for an outdoor water park. And so I'll be trying to, um, move forward to see what we can do to, uh, and it may come down to an RFP that if we can identify some, uh, companies that will do a, uh, design, build, and operate, um, arrangement with the county providing land and, and, and potentially some incentives on top of that. But that's kind of the thought process with that property. But I think the, uh, the indoor aquatic center will be a great addition to our community. I mean, we're one of the very few communities of this size with the population that we have that doesn't have anything of this nature, not even a water park. I mean, you've got little communities all across Alabama with water parks and, and here we are. I mean, we have to drive at least 30, 40 minutes to get to the nearest water park. So you, 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 you mentioned, uh, Paybag. That's something you can help with, both of you. When we get down to it. Just, just putting that little seed, you know, in there, just planting it, but-
Well, I, I wanna help with the indoor, um, pool, aquatic center.
I think that will be huge here.
I, I wanna help with that.
Yeah. And-
Is this in addition to, I, I think we had a, I had a meeting with, uh, the swim club from Mobile. Would this be-
This is in line with what, with what they're, they're wanting. In fact, they've provided all kind of information, uh, to my office about, uh, cost estimate. I mean, they, they got their act together, this group. They, they know, you know, and they'll be very involved. I, I anticipate that they would be involved in helping to manage, operate, you know, if we can work out an arrangement that is mutually beneficial.
Yeah, I'd like for Brian to start, uh, discussions with, uh, DOT about po, I mean, about a possible exit at Halls Mill or Lee's Lane or-
Well, you know, I met with John Cooper about a Halls Mill exit. And at that time, it was, you know, we, we could probably re, uh, circle back around on that one since we've gone, you know, we've started the complex. But it could either be there or we could go around to the Lee's Lane and that would create, because there's an issue with having exits too close together, although it seems like in, you know, Montgomery and Birmingham, they're right on top of it.
The county just seems to have a lot going on in that area. And it would be beneficial, in my opinion, to have an exit, uh-
Oh, I, I totally agree.
And an overpass at Lee's Lane to get over to the other side of the interstate. So-
Brian's laughing at us.
Well, I'll leave y'all, let up, y'all, y'all have the pool at the state level. They don't really care.
Right, we got, we got a lot of pools. We can always ask, right?
I just think it'd be beneficial there with everything that's going on to have, uh, easier access to that area, uh, with the plans in the future.
But I think it's time to try again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Number 40, and we'll have a CDP number on Monday. And there is a change. Appropriation contract with the Westside Athletic Association in amount of $300 from District Two funds for the Westside Seven U All-Star Teams, Cal Ripken, Southwest Regional Tournament entry fee. We have one add-on?
And they're the state cancer, Arkansas-
Okay.
For the regionals.
I had a, is that all the money they needed?
Well, the, the, the problem is this is all the money we can legitimately appropriate because the rest of it's for lodging and gas. And that's more of a, a personal expense.
Cause I was trying to follow up on that this week because they-
Once you, when you break down what they're, what, this is all that we can-
Okay.
Legitimately appropriate.
Right. And I'll, if you don't, I'll split that with you if you want.
Yeah, we can split that, uh, half it.
Somebody got that? Okay.
Let's handle.
Okay.
And an add-on would be number one, approve amendment of, amendment to the CIP 2019 001 in African Town redevelopment to add an additional $15,000. And number two, approve amendment to contract with Kimberly Knowles Development Group to increase contract by $15,000.
This is, is this CDP?
CIP.
Oh, CIP? Is, now, Kim, who is Kimberly Knowles?
She's a, she's a developer who's working out within that community to do, um, uh, some housing upgrades.
Oh, okay.
And we already have a contract with her, but some of the, uh, estimates ran more. So this is just trying to make up a, a little difference.
Everything's running more, right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it?
You wanna talk now?
It's my turn.
Since your tickle box has been turning over.
It has been a good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, item number one, approve setting the following speed limits as listed below. Item two, approve supplemental agreement number one with Southern Land Development for one of our 2016 Page Go projects to add one pay item. Item three, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of the right-of-way deeds as listed below. Item four, approve awarding the bid for the Jeremiah Denton Airport remarking of runway 12 dash 30 to Axtel Incorporated for their bid. Item five, approve rejecting all bids and authorize advertisement of rebid for our Sweet Town Road, Sweet Town Road North project. That's one of our 2020 Page Go projects.
So how much over? I'm just curious. Do you remember?
We originally thought this project was gonna cost about a million. And we knew that our bids were coming in a little high. So we bumped it up to 1.2 million estimated construction cost. The bids came in at 1.9 million.
Wow.
So we're gonna have to redesign it, see if we can cut a few hundred thousand out of this project. And I wanna have to go find some additional funds, probably out of Rebuild Alabama or something of that nature. And then we're gonna ask y'all to let us rebid it probably this fall sometime.
I mean, is this due to construction cost or do you think-
Construction cost or just-
Yeah.
Difficulty in getting, uh, building materials and-
And they're going up and up. It seemed like every week. We can't, we can't keep raising our estimates fast enough to catch up with them.
This is, this is gonna slow us down substantially on some of our projects.
Well, that's the conversation I'm gonna have to have with the three of y'all about our scheduling of some bidding of some of our projects.
Is this a resurfacing project or what was the project?
We're gonna try to bid a resurfacing project here in the next few weeks, uh, to test the asphalt, uh, side of things. There was a lot of concrete in that project that I just mentioned. Uh, we're hoping we can continue on with our asphalt projects. So. We're hoping we can continue on with our asphalt projects. So. Which I, I'll be honest with you, I think a lot of the, just, concrete companies and asphalt companies, because I've done a little research on the, why the material would be more, and I don't, I can't find it. So I think they're, just my opinion, I think they're kind of gouging people sometimes on it, but the, for the cost of a yard, I mean, that's just my opinion. I can't figure out where the cost of concrete and asphalt went up, but anyway.
The old added supply and demand.
Exactly, and that's what's going on with it.
Yeah.
I'll be glad when supply catches up with demand.
Well, you know, and I know Brian wants to discuss maybe, I, I think maybe slowing down some projects on some bids because it's, it's got to go back down, you know. I've had a discussion with the city engineer, and he, he's doing the same thing.
Yeah.
Going to have to assess whether, what they can and can't bid. Item six, commissioners approve preliminary plat only of riverscape down in District Three. Item seven, approve right-of-way and our use of an agreement for track eight on our McDonald Road project. Item eight, approve right-of-way agreement for track one and track five on the Hollis Ferry Road, Fire Tire Road Roundabout Project. Item nine, approve right-of-way agreement for track 13 on one of our 2018 Page Go projects. Item 10, approve assigning a contract for professional engineering services for Hamot Drive and Woodside Road drainage improvements to Mont McDonald, that's down in Commission District Three. Item 11, approve application to the Alabama Department of Transportation for some funding for the local road safety initiative program. And that will be on Bell and Graff Road, commissioners trying to widen the shoulders and resurface that section of road. Commissioners, we have one add-on, and I think y'all may have that in front of you to award the bid for our Grand Farms Road project. We were able to work out that situation with the funding with the Grants Department, so we're ready to move ahead. And that's it.
So I have a couple of things, but I need to take a quick break. I'll be right back.
This is, this is the other room I'm sitting in that she's needs, she was gonna, she's gonna renovate.
I could use a lot of the rooms around here, this whole carpet.
On that scope of work, it, it basically laid out, you know, all these rooms. So she just started on those two.
Is that the girl I met the other day?
Red bed.
Okay.
You know, she had it spread out on the floor.
Yeah.
It was all her color choices and her color board.
Yeah, it looked good. It looked really good.
So, we have some, a couple of letters from Judge Davis. And one is dated June 11th, one is dated July 2nd. And I wanted to respond, but I just wanted to make sure we were kind of all on the same page. So in the first letter, he's asking, well, mainly two things, and that is that we approached the school board about maintaining some of the school sites that we use as polling places for COVID. At the time that we did that, we really used, we played the COVID card really hard to get them to, to work with us on the 2020 election because I've, I've gotten a clear message that there are a lot of the principals who really would like them to get out of the polling place business because it, it brings all these people onto campuses and, and that kind of thing. So, so to go back, we will be going back asking, even though we know that this is not something. But before I moved ahead to approach the system about these sites, I just wanted to make sure we were kind of all on the same page about trying to get that.
I think a letter of request to continue utilizing the schools would be in order. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. The, you okay?
I don't have a problem with it.
I'm not sure what the response would be with that, but I just wanted.
And they can only say yes or no, I guess.
In the, also in that letter, he is asking us, he wants to do online poll worker training at a cost of $30,350. And he says that he already has that amount in his budget. He just needs us to create a new budget line to facilitate payment of that. And I just want to make sure we're okay with directed administration go ahead and, and do that.
Creating a new line?
Right, creating a new line so he can move forward. No new money.
I don't have a problem with that either.
Okay, I'm fine.
He thinks that'll be effective and get more workers. That's always the problem, trying to get enough people to agree to work.
The, the other is using 10x for election administration, and he details all the kind of cost savings that he thinks we'll recapture if we use their software and technology. It's a cost of $34,000. And once again, he already has the money in his election budget, and he just needs a new budget line item.
Trust him on what he thinks is best.
Yeah.
The final thing is one, I think, he is asking us to go ahead and begin, he wants us to draw some new precinct lines. And that's one where I think we're going to have to say, we aren't ready to do that now. And part of the reason, I think the reason for that is because we don't even, we won't even get census data until August. And then after we get census data, the state's got to redraw their lines, we've got to redraw our lines, and then we'll be in a position to do that. So I think it's, I, I talked, I met with Cynthia Fierman and talked about it and kind of the timetable. She provided me with what the state is telling her. So I think it's too early for us to do.
Because it would have to change after.
To try to do that. So that's what I want to just tell him, that we really can't do that until the state acts. But before I tell him that, I wanted to make sure we were.
And Cynthia's in agreement with that. She.
Yeah, this, that was her recommendation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right. So that's that. And of course, everything he says is really urgent. And so this last thing in his July 2nd letter, he wants to buy additional poll books. He said that he thought that they were, he got good feedback from election workers about the poll books, and he thinks that that will help to cut down on lines and all of that. And once again, he has the money, and the cost of the additional poll books. 200, 255,434. And he says, in order to do it, he has to have them ordered and received by September 30th. And he has the money in this budget, and he needs to spend it in this budget year. So he's seeking authorization to do that.
That's fine with me.
Also.
All right. So that, that was just, I just wanted to make sure we had a consensus about that. I don't think it requires any actions since there's no new money, but, so we can, I'll respond on behalf of the commission to both of these.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? If nothing else, we stand adjourned.